Would you like to begin the meeting? For those of you that aren't here in the school, I'd just like to repeat what I said before, and that is that this is an open meeting for the residents of the town in college. Anybody wishing to speak who is not a resident should identify herself and get permission to speak, but not to do it now, just when they have to speak. They should identify themselves and get approval from the group. The second thing I'd like to mention is that this meeting, the purpose of this meeting, is to review and discuss the articles within the warning. The warning is the apparatus that we use as a guideline for this meeting. This is not a political meeting, and therefore we do not have speeches either for or against any candidate that may be running. But we will discuss the ten articles that is in the warning. As most of you remember, what we do, we have two articles that need to be voted on by the Assembly here, and then the remaining articles are up for discussion, and they will be voted on by the Assembly about tomorrow at the firehouse beginning at seven, seven o'clock, right? Seven, seven o'clock. So, the first article that we need to vote on is, "To hear reports of town officials and make actions there." Just need a motion, please.
Some.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose or abstentions? Article two, "To see if the voters will authorize its treasurer to receive taxes until they become eligible."
Some.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose or abstentions? Before we begin on the articles that we'll be voting on tomorrow, Steve has asked for a minute to make a presentation.
All right, first of all, as chairman of the select board, I'd like to speak for the board and myself, and thank all of you for being here this evening. This should go at the end of the meeting, but with the way the ballot articles go, I thought it might be a little more appropriate if we did it upfront first. As you know, being a selectman, this does have some hurdles in the road now and then, and it's kind of a "damp if you do and damp if you don't" sometimes, but anyways, it's a fulfilling job in a lot of cases, and you can feed down in between us and a lot, but still rivers in the town, and it means quite a bit. With that said, we've got a person that's spent many years on this board, and I would like to have recognized this evening, with many years of service, would be Nelson Brown. Also, while we're on the subject, we have another person that I've been fortunate to work with on different events, and he's given a lot of his time also for this town, and he's come in as a treasurer, he's come in as an offer, a volunteer, he's sent us a friend of mine from many years, and I would give him some congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Not that Clint got away quite so quickly, a number of people have asked me, and I really can't give an explanation I'm comfortable with about why the amount owed by people with the legitimate taxes does not show up in the town warning. And Clint, could you add to that, please?
Hi. I went to a seminar, and I was told by the states that you're not any longer cutting amounts in the books. It has a lot to do with the state tables that the townspeople receive, people that know how to calculate and calculate that ones, and figure out your income and et cetera, your personal information, and so we have been advised not to do that anymore.
All right, we'll start off. Article number three, "The election of all longs required by Article four, shall the voters appropriate $817,070 for the general expenses of the town, of which $486,301.59 is to be raised by taxes, and $109,618.41 for prior years' undesignated surplus funds." Article five, shall the voters appropriate $676,700 for the maintenance and construction of highways in the town, of which $179,577.70 shall be raised by taxes, and $67,722.30 for prior years' undesigned surplus funds. Article six, shall the voters appropriate $3,000 towards support of the senior citizens' center? If we have members of these groups in the audience who wish to speak to any particular organization, please do so. Article seven, shall the voters appropriate $1,800 towards the support of the program services provided the town by the Bennington-Grutlin Upper Community Council? Eight, shall the voters appropriate $441 for support of disabled homeowners by the Vermont Center of Independent Development? Nine, shall the voters appropriate $1,000 for the supportive services rendered to the town by the Green Mountain Retired Senior Volunteer Program and Volunteer Center? Ten, shall the voters appropriate $1,200 for the supportive services rendered to the town by the Southwestern Vermont Area Council Agent? Eleven, shall the voters appropriate $15,000 for the operation and maintenance of the Swoon White Library? Swoon White Library, yes.
Yes, can everybody hear me?
Please identify yourself.
This is multiple, some of the boards of the library. And everybody take a moment to look at the picture on the front. It's a nice photograph of our new edition, and I encourage everyone to, if they have not seen it, to come and visit it. It's an absolutely beautiful space, and also, we're very proud that our whole project was done using, and it was a detention of ninety-five, ninety-eight percent local trade people, and so we're very proud of that. It's, we're hoping for business, and I mean, we encourage everybody to, A, come and visit the new edition, spend some time in the library, and B, please support us this year.
Yes, Steve? Could you come on and speak just very briefly about the opportunity, if you could pick up the session for the computers?
Yes, yes. Even if you are not in the library, if you're in the parking lot, and sometimes you'll see all the lights off at the library, but there are people in the parking lot making use of the very, very high-speed broadband, and I believe that it's, we are part of a program where, and I don't know if this is going to be Wi-Fi or just in the library itself, we're in part of a program where the speed of the, it's basically by the optic will be coming right into the library, and I think I'll be able to like download a movie in twenty seconds, so we're looking forward to that, but please do come.
It's great, so thank you. Article twelve, shall the voters appropriate $60,000 towards the operation and maintenance of the Prowl Fire Detective Association? Yes?
He's going to chief of the Prowl Fire Department, and behalf of the Prowl Fire Department, would you like to thank the townspeople for their support and continued support? Thank you.
Article thirteen, shall the voters appropriate for the operation and maintenance of the Prowl Valley Fire Department consisting of the East Prowl Fire Company, Prowl-Sore Company, and the North Prowl Fire Company, the sum of $52,000? Article fourteen, shall the voters appropriate $19,500 towards the Prowl Valley Fire Truck and Whizzler? Fifteen, shall the voters appropriate $2,500 towards the Prowl Valley Fair Association Committee Fire Works Program? Jim?
Jim Winchester, I represent the Prowl Valley Fair Association, I'd like to say that they were very, very lucky, through the support of some very, very, very nice people living here. It's the fireworks side, the way we need your support, and thank you for the past and the future.
Thank you. Shall the voters appropriate $30,000 for the Prowl Rescue Squad, for its ambulance, replacement, insurance, operation, and maintenance? Article seventeen, shall the voters appropriate $500 for the supportive services rendered to the town by the Project Against Violent Encounters? Eighteen, shall the voters appropriate $5,000 towards the support of the Oak Hill Children's Center?
I'm Carolyn Markell, I'm president of the board of directors at Oak Hill, and I'm here to ask for your support for the children's center to ensure our continued early childhood education is still working in our community. This year, we celebrate a community with forty years of early care and education in power, and our mission is to support the needs of families by providing quality child care in a stimulating and nurturing learning environment. Thank you.
Article twenty, shall the voters appropriate $2,500 towards the support of the program and services provided to the town by the Tatorial Center? Twenty-one, shall the voters appropriate $11,000 towards the Support for Visiting Nurses Association and Hospital? Twenty-two, shall the voters appropriate $200 for the support of Vermont Green Island? Twenty-three, shall the voters appropriate $500 for the support of the Bennington County Conservation District? Twenty-four, shall the voters appropriate $500 for the support of the Bennington Coalition for the Homeless Incorporated?
Mr. President, my name is Stacy New, and I'm not a resident, and I'm here to say something.
Very good. Is anybody on the check to be speaking on this side? There's several, please raise your hand. Go ahead, please, one of the other side.
As I said, my name is Stacy New, I'm the president and board of directors of Bennington Coalition for the Homeless. It is a humbling task, stands for you tonight, to inform you that the financial information presented to you in order for us to get on your ballot was incomplete and incorrect, and we have been advised by our funding agencies that we cannot take the money from the town, even if the town's vote voting in, because the financial reports we gave you weren't in.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry about that.
So are we.
Hopefully next year, it will be a...
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody have a question? Twenty seconds. Article twenty-five, shall the town of town vote to raise appropriately and expend the sum of $2,000 for the support of the Bennington Free Clinic, a program of greater benefit integrated community services in the non-for-profit entity under Code 501(c)(3) of the Internal Relations Code? Yes?
Hi, I'm Lisa McDougall, I'm on the board for the Bennington Free Clinic, and we would appreciate your support in continuing to serve. We have about a thousand patients coming to the free clinic every year, so thank you for supporting us, we appreciate it.
Any, any, excuse me, there are some questions, do you need to explain a little bit more of the operation, because how do we collect the money, and what this money will go for?
The clinic money will go towards things such as vaccinations and rent. We do get some funding through fundraising, we had a fundraiser yesterday at Cospec Mountain to raise money, we raised about $12,000. So it'll go towards rents, vaccinations, and just general service to the community. All the doctors and nurses that work there do it on their own time, they work for free to help people.
Thank you.
If you have any more questions, I can put you in contact with people who might be able to answer them.
Thank you very much. Article twenty-six, shall the town of town appropriate $2,500 to be used towards operation and expansion of the Turning Point Recovery Center of Bennington, Ohio?
Is there anybody here that knows anything about this place? They came in with a bunch of signatures as we had it.
Jim, do you, somebody, do you have something to ask?
I don't belong to the organization, again, I'm Stacy New from Bennington, if I have the permission to speak.
Yes.
I don't belong to the organization, or I'm not affiliated with, however, many of the residents in the Homeless Coalition take advantage of their services, and what it is, is a recovery program. We're all familiar with AA, this is more than that, this is AA, Al-Anon, Alapham, it's located on Main Street in Bennington, it's completely private, and it's completely funded through organizations like this. No one is turned away, they offer counseling, they offer connective services, and they work with RAC, Coalition for the Homeless, CADE, and all that, so it's an addiction treatment center. It also serves teens, and many kids will come through the legal system, part of their probation to get involved for the first time with any kind of arrest, it has to do with addiction, the use of drugs are required to take counseling there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions back there?
Jim O'Connor, I want to comment negatively on this program. This Turning Point Club on Main Street in Bennington was organized by the state legislature, they're part of, they're not private at all, okay, they technically private, I guess, but Vermont Department of Health, Agency of Human Services, Office of Alcohol and Drug Abuse. It's a statewide overhang, the total fiscal year thirteen state budget is $779,101. It's oversight by the Department of Health, and it has Vermont Legislature mandates deliverables. I understand a comment, because there's a lot of confusion in town, as the witness said, it seems to present itself as a private place, but it's almost fully funded by the state of Vermont, and if you're looking on the window in the right-hand corner, it has the ADAP stickers, that's one of the forms, the people in Prowl, okay, that it's almost like double taxation. It's a state agency, and they're asking us to give more money to the state agency, as far as I know, those are facts, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here who speaks on this? No? Article twenty-seven, shall the town of town vote to eliminate the office of auditors, and the select board shall contract with a certified public account? Can anyone speak back? Yes, Jim?
Actually, I wasn't going to speak on this.
Jim, what's your name?
My name's Jim Cozett, actually, I wasn't going to speak on this, because I thought many other people would speak up prior to me with my handbook. I, for one, do not want to see the auditor position eliminated. I think it's a great service that that position makes, number one, to keep an eye on the books on a monthly, a weekly basis, whenever they're in there. They also put together this annual report, and I don't think it's something that needs to be put together by an outside auditing firm that spends or charges maybe a hundred or more than a hundred dollars to, an hour, to work on a report that our auditors can put together. I'd like to question the board, why they are really asking to have this position removed from the Prowl, from Prowl. We're not that in the Nixon age, where you didn't want someone, you just got rid of them in a position. I think we need to think about this, we need to figure out what we need to leverage now. Are there problems that have occurred? If so, I commend whoever found them, brought them to our attention, but I don't think it's a reason to get rid of a position just because something was not, someone didn't like someone.
Thank you.
Before going further, I also want to just commend the board on the way that I see the taxes are stabilized, they're still on great, if not decreasing, and my final thought is, I feel bad for the housing coalition, that when I read it in the paper a couple of weeks ago, that they were going to Bennington and say that they can't accept the money. There are many people in our, in our town that are homeless, and now that I'm at the school district, I also see that there are kids that are homeless, living up in Bennington in shelters, and for $500, if there's any way that people can just pitch in, one dollar, that would be the $500 of Prowl, but I, if we give more, I think we should do whatever we can.
Thank you very much.
In terms of that, I was going to say, can we, I'm a Rosemary Pollitt here, I'm a citizen of Prowl, a couple of things, but, you know, your idea of us chipping in, I think if we put something at the polls as you're leaving the polls, just outside the polls, you know, letting people know the situation of, you know, those of us here know, but maybe the people coming in are not going to know that, and I bet we wouldn't collect probably an excess of that by the end of the day, so I don't know if that's a possibility. Karen would probably be the one who could speak to that.
I think that's illegal, but I don't want to say for sure.
If you don't have a real, any, I've got a home with Dylan, he seems to be able to talk to her. I don't want to answer that, but it certainly is something that I think that we, as Jim and you have ultimately now realized, and it's, anybody that deals with the school system is very well aware of the number of children who do not have a place to go home to. It is a very, very sad situation, and that only makes you necessary.
And my other question on terms of the ballot article itself, is to ask the select board if, if in making their decision to do this, if they checked with other towns in the state of Vermont that do have gotten rid of their auditors, and how that works, you know, and if it's working for them or not, because it seems that most of the towns have auditors, so there must be a good value to having them.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else, before we ask the town board to respond, I have a question back there, if you have a question?
Tom Green from John Rowan, my question is, what are the qualifications that somebody has to have to become an auditor for the town? I mean, are they just elected? Do they have to be CPAs? And for CPAs, are they current with their licenses, meaning with all their certification credits, their peer reviews? What type of qualifications do our auditors have?
I can't imagine. Yes, yes, nobody wants to.
You can run for any office without any qualifications? That's your choice. It's the people that go to vote that will decide if you're qualified or not, and they either elect you in or not elect you in. They are not CPAs.
Okay.
Not in our town at this time, we don't have CPAs and auditors, no.
Okay.
Okay, so they're not licensed, they don't say they are here.
I'm, I'm not saying that.
Just, just to let you know, they're, they're just, our townspeople running for office trying to help out, and do the best that they can with the knowledge that they have.
Sure, is that why then we have a project with an audit firm, to make sure that they're going right?
We have an outside auditing firm, and since I've been in office for a very long time, it's, it's something that the town has decided to do, the board have kind of had to answer that, but I don't know, I, I just think, I think it's a great thing to have, it's been in our budget forever, to have an outside auditing firm.
Oh, I agree with them, an outside auditing.
And, and I think it's great to have them check in the books every year.
I agree with you one percent, that, that it should be an outside.
Because they are qualified to do that.
Yeah.
Jim, Jim?
In my experience with the financials of the town, and also with the school district, an auditor comes into the town, and will look at me down she at the end of the year, he will take test results throughout the past year, checking a few checks, checking a few invoices, checking a few other activities, he is not, an auditor does not go in and check every single, I, I am in the town, and whatever.
Well, that's not entirely true, because other school districts, things like that, they actually do it, you're not, and they go through absolutely everything.
Okay, it all depends on what was the auditor's request.
Right.
I dial the numbers, I check every single, and if it's, if I'm mistaken, then I'm sorry about that, I mean, I know that a lot of times we also do this for tests. As for me, our auditors, what they do, they'll look at individual things, just to make sure that something is not overlooked, so that it's not waiting until the end of the year to find, they just take it somewhere.
Right, so I just wanted to call you.
Article, yes?
Can we just ask Mr. Hutchins what it is that he checks for? He's been on, working with us for years, and he's done a great job. Each week? Week?
I'm in, whoop. My name is Ray Shields, I'm from Lake Water. I've been checking just about everything. I check gas receipts, I check totals, I check mileage of vehicles, I check warrants weekly, I add up the check registry, I look at the checks to make sure they're in sequence, I do everything I possibly can to look out for the taxpayer, and that's my dollar.
Got to ask, does any more questions?
Yes, go ahead.
What's it costing, Jeff Hurry, what's it costing the town of Prowl to have someone check gas receipts, mileage, and everything, when you have an outside firm come in and do it again? What's the dollar amount to us taxpayers?
Okay, I'm going to try to round this out as best I can. We've had auditors, as long as I can remember also, we've had an outside audit firm, the On Deal Group, which does our annual audit, we have a three-year contract with them now. They run through our systems and check what we've spent versus what we've got, and what it shows up as. I'm not an auditor, I don't understand this stuff, I don't want to. As a board, we oversee this, we're going to be overseeing it more. They run through our systems and check what we've spent versus what we've got and what it shows up as. I'm not an auditor, I don't understand this stuff, I don't want to. Um, as a board, we oversee this. We're going to be overseeing it more. It's going to eliminate the auditor's position. It's probably part of our control, we showed them years ago. We have a redundancy with the audit system, with people inside doing it in an outside firm. Um, I don't have a problem with an outside firm, I don't have a problem with inside auditors until there's a problem within. The problem within is, we cannot afford to check every cent that goes through the town. If there's fifty cents spent here, ten cents spent wrong here, little things like that, a good auditing firm will tell you, they cannot precisely go to the penny. We could not afford it with our own auditors, we couldn't afford it with a professional group. They're going to spend an hour to save a thousand. That's, it's just not sensible. What we've run into in the last year is, we're losing an auditor that has given a tremendous amount of his time to the town. When I say given, they say just that, given. The charges that we've got have been very miniscule for what has been done. He's kept a good eye on us, he's taken care of us, and we have the faithful for it. We've had other auditors, some are no-shows, one person's kind of pretty much taking care of things, maybe converses with others once in a while, but for the most part, we have one person. We changed this this past year. We have another auditor come in, and I've gone on, been on a big fan stand and say everything's happened, but things have changed dramatically. There was a lot of bustle at the office, we've had a lot of inventory expenses that we've had to incur before that weren't necessary. We tried to explain what the situations were. We didn't get very far with it. We ended up hiring a labor lawyer. We have a bill for thirty, one hundred and fifty-five dollars on one instant alone on this particular case that was unnecessary. It was unnecessary because of the fact we read what we had, what was in place, and how it was done. We had another illegal opinion, none of this was acceptable. To protect the town and the town's interests, we had to go this direction. So with this said, we have got, I got a statement from the Bonn Addy Group, and what it says is, "An auditor town using a professional judgment and concept of materials, material allows, the financial statements can have errors, but not to affect the opinion because of the amount is so small, there's not enough concept maturity with audit every spending would cost to be protected." We are running the professional audit system of less than one percent mistakes. We have had letters that ended up in the Bennington banner because of this issue that went on this page here. They make you, me, us, the town of Powell, look extremely poor. I don't like that, you shouldn't like that. And the paper has an article in it that says, uh, "Fraud might be a reasonable, to a reasonable person, a cover of misappropriation of town's funds." These sort of things being sent to the banner, in my eyes, are not in the best interest of this town. And what is done internally, concealed hours and wages, um, things like this, people read the paper, they seem to believe this is the way this holds, and the papers have been written. This is bashing the town. We are the town board. If there's an issue by, on by any auditor, regardless, noon, been there a hundred years, whatever, it takes two auditors, that's a quorum out there, to have to discuss this amongst themselves, find out if it is a reputable problem, and then bring it to the select board, for the select board to make the decision on, is it a problem or is it something we deal with? These steps were eliminated. It hit the paper, it hits upstate, it hits the lawyers, we were the last one to receive. So with problems, we have a lot of good people working in this town, in our offices, who set the cart. So with that said, we decided not by voting, so through three or two, if we would, try to eliminate the auditors and get that contract. We are not the only town that does it. By coincidence, I own property in Wells. I got your, your book the other day in the court. They've gone away with their auditors. We called the chairman of that board and asked him how it's working. He said it's working very good, they're very pleased with what's happening with the elimination of this. They have an outside audit firm, they have a report inside. They have had people within their office do their annual report with a report from their professionals also. So I think you'll find in the future, and I hate to say this because I really kind of look forward to the town report myself, because I think a lot of people do, but I think in the future you're going to find that disappearing. With all the communications online and everything, probably the future of the town report is pretty much going to go away. But I believe if this board can handle this, I believe the professional auditors can handle it, and we will have reports available to people, and we will continue.
Thank you. Now, we have a question.
I was one of the selectmen who read this article. And the reason I voted no to the article was, it's always good to have multiple people who check the books. And, uh, and the reason for the full-time auditor, we, not the full-time, but the yearly auditor we did, and we did this, got, uh, I don't know, maybe nine or 10 years ago, when we got our first grant that was large for the wastewater, we were required by the federal government to have a special audit. So they did the audit for the town, and they did the audit for the federal money at the same time. And in that process, we decided that it worked so well to keep that type of audit going every single year because we had federal money. Up until this year, we were spending millions of dollars on federal money every single year, and you were required by law to have that outside audit. Uh, and again, I think it's a good thing to do that. Before that, they used to have an outside auditor come in and look at the books about every three years. And then the inside auditors basically washed it through the other time that did our reports. Now again, uh, all of us know in different time, we have people and individuals who deliver the message different, and some people don't like how the message is delivered sometimes. But that doesn't mean that we do away with positions because we don't like the way people deliver messages. That's what the vote is for. We vote people in, we vote people out for those reasons. And my belief is, is that's the way you deal with the issue if it's an individual, not a position. Positions are different than individuals. And I've always said, all the jobs we have, whether they're volunteers or whether they're elected or appointed by this board, they're a position. We shouldn't be looking at people so much and how they speak up at different meetings and so forth, because over time, they'll come and go. And as Steve has said many times, the people that we know would like to serve, but some of them are as thick-skinned as some of us sat here at this table today, and they basically don't want to be dashed and, and, let's face it, that's what elected officials are. Currently, one of the people to be abashed is one of our auditors, because we don't like the way he delivers the message, and I've been the first to say that. Uh, Ray and I, and more than once at work, but the bottom line is, we knew enough to respect each other in their opinion. We didn't have to agree, and Lord knows we didn't at times. Uh, the real thing is, I just want to tell you people, think of the position and the fact that through the years, you'll have a multitude of people looking into books, not just this one person. And we do have reports where, over the last couple of years, it's less than one percent. But, you know, one year it was thirteen hundred, uh, another year it was seven hundred something, another year it was, uh, eight hundred, another nine, that was down. I mean, that's not a lot of money, but when you start adding up over time, and I can remember last year when somebody was having about a three-dollar bill that was paid by me and the other auditor who handed it to me to sign and pay. Well, thanks to Ray, he did a little homework and found out we did owe him money, and we did the right thing. But the bottom line is, that's the sort of stuff we expect to be brought up here. I think if people want to know when we have some little minor errors, they want to know we're doing something about it. All this board took action, and what, I know, and we are doing something to try to correct these minor errors. But we wouldn't have known about it if it wasn't for our internal auditors. So again, you need your auditors.
Thank you. (applause). And are there other comments that people would like to bring to this board?
Hi, this is Carolyn. I was, um, doing for tax law for about one year, and I hate to think a number of times that I was overpaid and turned it back into the town. If I hadn't have been honest enough to turn it back into the town, how long it would have taken an outside auditor to find that I was overpaid and ask for the money back? I also agree with Nelson, if the board gets manned at our town clerk or our treasurer, do we just eliminate their positions too? Because that's what we're saying now.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Morgan Hunt. Um, I have a question. Um, we have less than twenty-four hours until we have a vote. How much research has gone into finding out how many other towns in Vermont have done away with how well they're doing and acting with not having one yet? I mean, do we, you really don't have enough time to find out on our own what research has been done to find this out? So we know which way to vote?
We don't, we don't have, so I would say that we don't have a practical number of the kind of people to do so, I don't think you answered the question.
So we're supposed to represent our town, and we're supposed to speak up for us? And obviously, before you guys tossed it in to try and out, you know, to do away with you, I think you guys ended up doing the research to find out how well the other town did?
Okay, as I said before, I didn't take a lot of time to find out. I found out by accident that this particular town had done away with their auditors, and that's why I called them to see how their feeling was working without auditors. Because we have auditors as far as I know. They, the board, I talked to the chairman of the board of their morals, said they're doing fine. They're doing good internally, they've got an outside audit firm as we do. Everything is working fine there. Uh, our audit report that we get, Bonn Addy, which I said before, is saying there is absolutely no issues they're finding that's out of line to stir any attention to go further and dig out more information. If something ran afoul, then they would dig into our situation more. We as a board have to follow through. We as a board have to understand what's going on more, and I've been on board seven years, and I'm going to be quite honest, I don't believe that we've done our diligence as looking into this as closely as we should. Uh, we are now, and it's unfortunate that, as I said before, what Nelson said about an auditor internally is fine. I like the idea myself, but I don't like it when it messes up the system and it disturbs people that we have working with and we fall behind. And when we fall behind, it's other people telling us, the state auditor from Montpelier calling us, saying, "What's going on?" And we don't know. When everybody around us finds out what's going on before we do it, we're the board that's supposed to be representing this town. So there's a problem, and this is why we're trying to go this direction. We have the first, we have things in place. It's nothing to say that a couple of years from now, we couldn't go back and say, "Well, we can do this better and go another direction again." Who knows? Anything we do to improve the town, we're not here to do anything more than take care of the town that we were in, Nelson.
I understand that. I just, I don't understand is, how long, um, how long ago did you guys start thinking about taking out the auditor? I just, I'm not, I'm just, you know...
I was paying one of your, oh, sorry.
I don't, I don't remember if last year it became a draw.
It was on, it went on about a couple of weeks ago, two weeks. We started having trouble.
I don't remember just doing that at all.
No.
Because, I mean, and then I know there's like a lot of, um, under, for low-income families, you don't have the internet or can't afford to get a paper, so obviously, there's going to be some places where a lot of people don't understand this.
So it was in the papers, the paper does follow our meetings by closely. It was televised at a lot of different meetings, we had issues, we talked about it at our meetings, so it's been out there. You know, if you didn't have the internet or didn't get the paper, then you wouldn't be aware of it. We have had issues all year, and this is what problems.
So if you're, if you're low-income, there's pretty much shut out.
I didn't say that. I said if you don't have the paper, if you didn't have access to internet, we can't go door to door and tell you what we're talking about in our meetings.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
Just, just, we have other questions here.
I just want to respond to one. Me as a board member, it was about two weeks ago when I knew there was going to be a petition to go away with the auditors. Not before. There was a lot of talk about our auditor not being what we felt was appropriate in handling and delivering messages to us and calling upstate. But two weeks ago, there was a, uh, article brought to, to the board, and the board voted to put it on. That was three to two.
I, I'm sorry, I guess I, I...
We have some other people here. We have a gentleman back here, his name's...
Rich Rider, town resident. Um, I noticed on here that there's no cost involved, you don't have a cap. Um, I mean, if we hire an auditor, how much are they going to charge us as a taxpayer? I'd like to know that. And number two, if we do have auditors, then do we have to hire auditors to check the auditor? Well, why not? Because now you're just relying on that one auditing firm, and who's to say they're right? I know personally, if we're going to go this route of hiring an auditing firm, then I certainly as a taxpayer want another auditing firm to check that auditing firm to make sure they're doing their job.
Yeah, but they're professionals.
Is that... Hey, 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 one person would have to... Yes, please.
I'm a taxpayer, and I use my vote to get that auditor in place. I don't want to lose that vote. I want this board to work for me, with my...
Oh, you got, oh, I'm just curious, how are the selectmen going to find time to be an auditor as well as a selectman?
We're not going to, we do warrants, the warrants come across our desk. We have taken steps, I have talked to our administrator about different things that we may improve our knowledge and make it simpler when something comes across our table to check it in a simpler manner. These are minor mistakes that have been made. A town making seven hundred or eight hundred or a thousand dollars worth of mistakes in a year's time, with the amount of money that is spent in this town on different things. I don't like to see a thousand dollars wasted. You know, you're not talking a lot of money when you're talking maybe a million dollars worth of checks running through a business.
You have, you have, was a gentleman over here, if I can, I'm, did you decide on saying, I got it, yes?
Steve, have you read the statute on how you go about removing an elected official from office?
I most certainly have.
How, how does that come?
How does it come? You can eliminate the auditor's position, you can eliminate it by having a professional audit firm in place, which we have. We have contracted for three years with the Bonn Addy Group, they're a group that we're contracted with previous, we contracted with, I think it was back in probably October of this year.
Isn't it, any elected official is elected by the town, and the way to eliminate them is not to re-elect us?
You can do that, or you can eliminate the position. We have had issues.
But how do you eliminate a position? Say it was the town clerk or the treasurer or somebody else?
We're not talking that. We're talking a position that we're replacing with another. If something comes due in the future, and I don't know what that would be, replaces the town clerk, then maybe we would eliminate that position. I don't know, the modern technology that's out there now, we may end up eliminating a lot of positions for it now. But right now, we have an option. If we have some problems within the system of the town, there's a way to eliminate this without, what I'd like to say without putting any fingers, is without getting into any lawsuits of eliminating one person, becoming prejudiced and eliminating that person for any such reasons. We eliminate the position, we clear that, we put a firm on to cover it. We're doing what we're supposed to do, the board will cover the rest of the bases. If there's issues, we'll cover them as we go. We've covered a lot of issues as we've come through the last few years, and I'm sure there'll be more.
Okay, we said we had discussed this, something came to mind to me. It wasn't all that many years ago when we had an outside auditor... It wasn't all that many years ago when we had an outside auditor firm do our audit and it happened to be an error. And we had to pay another auditor firm to do it. So we had two professional firms before we were done. But I want to make you aware, they made mistakes too. And we, and we made disparers in here in town.
Yes. Is that, is that, is that back, yes?
Does that mean?
Yes, it is.
And my question is that we're paying the auditors that are working for us now about 3,000 a year. Am I understanding that right?
That's the town report too.
Am I understanding that big?
That's including the prices bringing that town report.
That includes the price of the town report, bringing up everything else.
Yes. But what, what do we, what do we pay the outside auditors? Like, I'm reading here that maybe it's as much as 13,000.
We budget like for all different positions, certain amount of money for each position.
But didn't you bid them in? Don't they bid for this job? Do not these professional auditors, did they not have to bid for this job?
Yes.
And who set up the bid? Who decided to write that bid and say, "I want you to do such and such" so that these professionals could bid on it? Know what they were bidding for?
We have professionals write that up with them.
Who?
Then would be Ellen, our administrator, working between the board and.
It wouldn't have been the auditors who wrote it up?
They would be involved in this.
But they won't be anymore. If you have your way.
If.
Who is gonna write it up then?
Right.
You who confess that you know nothing about auditing, going to write it?
Well, again, I hate to be rude, but I'm very excited. I know more about auditing now than I did of your bill.
And I sure know more than I, I know that you probably know more than I do. I'm not, you know, I'm not in any way putting you down any more than I am able to put myself down. Um, but, you know, I think we need the auditors.
I understand your feeling.
And the other thing, the other thing I wanna know is, can we get rid of the professionals that we have now? And if so, what is the force for us of doing that? Because other towns do not have professionals come in every year. They happen to come in maybe every three years. And then of course, as Brownell explained, we did have them when we were spending so much money on the sewer and so forth. And that's when we hired them. And now we can't get rid of them.
We just signed a three-year contract. It's a very exciting anniversary.
But I mean, I would, if you stand right here and you come asking auditors, how do we ever get our auditors banned?
The same way we do it now.
Let's, let's, let's.
And we can't?
We, we go out and we put it on the ballot and hold them in.
But who?
One of your, one of your questions about the 3,000 I'd like to answer, we budget 3,000 for the auditors. That does not mean we're gonna spend 3,000 for the auditors. It means we could spend 2,500. We could spend 10,000. You've got a 300, $300 bill here. One bill and one lawyer because of auditing this year. That's one bill. There's more. All right? So when you get all done, that 3,000.
If you've got a lot of people wanting to respond, yeah, they just, just want to.
I just think I have a paper bone I have very much. The outside firm at this point in time, they can't get rid of anyway.
It's okay, three years.
Okay. For whether, whether we've already contracted, contracted whether or not we still owe that money for the wastewater facility and they have to be in place until all the money is paid back. So until that's over, they have to be here. So the outside auditing firm really isn't up for discussion. The outside auditing firm that made an error that Nelson did speak about, they did make an error. But, but they were from Massachusetts, they were from Massachusetts. They didn't even have the proper, they didn't have the proper knowledge for what they were doing. They were a new firm. They were picked to do our auditing. It happens. Banadia is a well-known firm. They do all the school districts and everything. They do a great job. I'm not saying vote yes or no for anything. I'm just saying letting you know that we can't get rid of the outside auditing firm. So that's not even for up for discussion today.
Okay, that's, 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 I'm going to call out, yes. Yes, I'm sorry.
Joyce, so I was looking at the warning for tomorrow. And we're gonna be voting on an auditor for one year and an auditor for three years. Now, if someone gets voted in and then Article 27 gets passed, how's the town going to handle them? Uh, the situation? Is that congratulations, you're the new auditor? Or by the way, you're fired? I mean, how are we gonna handle that?
I would assume we say thank you, but the position's been eliminated.
But what about the people that voted for them? Are you gonna say the town people, thank you for your vote, but it doesn't count?
If I'm not mistaken, there's only one running right at the moment. It's only one position. I don't believe, I think there's no.
What, if everybody goes to decide to the town, they wanna write in me? Here we are, go.
But that's a possible. It would be rare, we haven't before.
I think, I think.
We have to make decisions for the town as a board. All right? It may not be pleasing to everybody, but we have to do what we feel is best interest of the town.
Over there, it's all right. I have a very brief letter. No. Just to explain something. If you would listen to this letter, it was sent to Jared Cope. Um, the headline of the banner was, "The Auditor Found 22,000 In Short Falls Or Errors." Can you remember that? I'm sure a lot of you remember that. You appeared unsatisfied. Okay. I didn't give it to the banner. There you go. I didn't give it to the banner. Okay. I sent it to him again, writing the letter. This letter is being sent to you by certified mail. Restricted delivery, Steve Cope, Plano Select Hall Chairman. To ensure that you receive this letter and maintain, maintain this matter in a confidential manner. And previous to that paragraph, after meeting with an auditor, Vermont State Auditor, he told me four different ways that we could go about this. And I explained him in the letter. One of them was an executive session where we could discuss this with the full select board to see these problems that I had found. Another one was in a workshop setting. Another one, the auditor would come down. There were some process problems. Accounts payable and payroll should be separated. He advised us how that can be done. He wanted to come down here and work with the town. I thought these were positive things. This went public, not by the auditor. I worked very hard and diligently to put this material together. He reviewed it, the auditor from Vermont, he said there was a problem. I did the next best thing. I brought it to the select board chairman in a confidential manner. It cost me $12 to give him this certified, which I hoped would remain confidential and be dealt with the town in a professional manner. But it went to the banner. I did give it to the banner. Mr. Cope did.
Corrections, I did not give it to the banner. I read it at our meeting. It was sent to me as a chairman, the board not sending. I do not handle things, most of the time, alone from the board. Remember, the five-member board, it has to be shared with other members of the board. Plain and simple. Number two, this was not, and I repeat, not done in a professional manner by an auditor. Remember what I said a minute ago about, you find a problem as an auditor, you discuss it with another auditor. That's two. That's the quorum. Now, the two of the auditors discuss how to take action. They bring it to the board. They don't take a trip to Mount Pili and talk to the state auditor up there saying, "Honest guy, serious problems, here's what I found." And then bring it back. I too talked to the state auditor. And it was a whole different conversation we had and what he understood was taking place. And his words to me were, "What are you doing?" I said, "We're handling it internally." He said, "Thank you." That's what you need to do. If you need help, call me.
Rose, bring the public here again. I, I have two questions about things that are on the, in the town report.
Good.
And I'd like to ask those.
Sure.
But then I would like to ask if, next year, if this ballot passed, would I have anybody present in the room to be able to answer my questions? Are we gonna ask the professionals to come in at their dog rage an hour to be here at our meeting, to be available for people to ask questions? I think that's something to consider. So should I just?
Yeah, mine is asking two questions anyway. I, whoever feels comfortable answering these two questions.
One question is on page 51. Many regards. The actual amount, this is the first time I can receive this. I don't think this was last year. I did the report last year, but I may be wrong, so I can like hold my weight. Uh, the last, I'm on that page, but miscellaneous budgeted 20, actually spent 23,854. This year, it's 180. I was wondering what kind of miscellaneous that was.
Ellen, okay. I can't write now off the top of my head, tell you what the expense was for. I guess that question can be answered. If you need to know or write to me, you can come in and see me at the office. I can print out a report, tell you exactly what was spent under that miscellaneous. Okay. Most likely it was like one-time expense or something. I can't remember.
Sure.
Okay. You would have asked before, I think it's a 40, I'd ask.
Right.
Okay. Um, there's, there's a, because that's an expense line.
Right.
Um, so.
Something unanticipated.
Something unanticipated would go under there. And that's why it's there. Sometimes we give miscellaneous revenues in that have no place else to go. You don't make a new line every time you have something new. It's too many lines, it's too confusing, so we combined everything. I can do a printout and answer those questions for you.
Okay. And the other question is on page 55. And it's liabilities. And accounts payable. And then the next one, due to the general fund, 29,400. From where?
That is from the, I'm going to answer it. That is from the wastewater, not the old wastewater, not the old one. I think it's the wastewater, that's the wastewater interest payment for the lines of credit that are outstanding on the building of the wastewater facility. Um, there was no money in the, we had, had a little account wastewater checking account. There was no money in there. The general budget had to cover that cost. And so we got reimbursed by the state for late interest fees that were owing those lines of credit. There is no longer due to the general fund. We have gotten that money and that is cleared up. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on the negotiations? If not, I'd like to adjourn this for you. But I will see we have Representative Batso here. And who each year wants to speak to us on the wider issues. We made an official board, we should, yeah. If I can, if you can.
Do you want me to speak before, when the meeting?
I'm sorry, I, I forgot. I, Rose asked me to call her again to the meeting for something she wants to say. I would provide.
This, this is on a totally different note. I'm the president of the Friends of County, which is a local nonprofit. And for the past three years, I've been coming to this, sort of filling in on what we've been doing. This year, we did the, we raised $2,300 for the Spirit of Sharing, which is thanks to Peter Hopkins and the elementary teachers. We collect and then help and share that with gifts to some of the children in the community. And it's sort of been canceled at Christmas. And this year, we work with almost 100 students in terms of that. We also have, as an ongoing program, we have the community garden. Um, the number of people who have asked for slots on that diminished of the last year or so, two years. I'm not the person who oversees that, so I'm not sure. But with the demolition of Bartow's Lodge, the source of water for the garden has, is not available. So unless there is a strong demand for space there, I think we're going to at least put that in until early year and see what happens. Uh, and the last thing is that the Friends of County just contributed to a start, give some seed money to a startup organization that's gonna be called Hour for Our Community. And it's a Benton Regional Time Exchange. And it's an organization where it's a membership group and people who are members, it helps them trade services back and forth and avoid the financial cost of doing that. So you determine what you wanna offer as a service. Maybe it's you're willing to run, pick somebody who doesn't have a card for doctor's appointment or something like that. And in return, you get to ask anybody else in the group to do something for you. And it's, it's done an hour by all the basics. So if anybody wants more information on that, I have a card. You can see me after this meeting and just, it'd be really helpful that information. See that you find out about it. Hopefully get it going in the spring. And it, right now, we're waiting for authorization as a nonprofit from the state of Vermont.
Thank you, Rose. If that emotion is to return the meeting, then Representative Batso will rest in group. Motion, motion to the second?
Second.
Call the favor.
Aye.
Mr. Batso.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrooke. Well, I think I'm the only thing that stands between the new and a wittering ride home. And so I'm not gonna take too much time. And I ask you all, please drive very safely. I think Al deserves a good night's sleep, doesn't need to respond to any accidents. I think our road crew does a great job of keeping the roads open and keeping them in good shape. And as I look around, I see that everybody here, you are the core of the town. The chips in, who stands out, who takes on a hard job of public work. And, uh, and, uh, it's, oh, it's an honor to be part of that with all of you. And even when issues are hard or contentious, remember, this is us. This is our town. And I think that we should, you know, congratulate ourselves on being willing to step up our issues. And always the work to finding the best way to do that. What I wanna do is, is not too much. I wanna point out to you that there's a lot of information I left over there. There's a letter in the town report that you can read. I also sent out my email. Probably most of you have seen it, my usual town report. Uh, for those of you who aren't getting my email, but would like to, you may have fallen off, changed your address. You know, pick up one of my newsletters and shoot me an email. I'll put you right back on. Those pieces there will give you as good of ideas in general of what's up right now with Mount Pili or with the state as any long conversation a lot of you have stayed for now and then. So I'm willing to stay here and talk to you as long as you would like. But I wanna point out a few things that I've brought along. I think they're important. Remember, this year, we're going back to the fact that you have to declare your homestead. That for residential, if you wanna have a residential rate, the default is you're non-residential unless you declare as residential. For a few years, we thought we could just have you declare once and then only, you know, let the tax department know that had changed. But there was too much churn, too much inequity, too many technical problems with that and too much unfairness to taxpayers. Uh, but at the same time, I will say, as we changed it so that the notification you get early in the summer, a lot of people ignore, your final time to appeal that will be much later in the fall. And it should come after you get your tax bill. So we should have messed up how the taxpayers, it should be fairer all along. But remember, this year, when you do your taxes for your homestead, you have to do this. And this little thing will tell you how. You can do it very easily on the web or, so I don't think that'll go too far. Here's my town report, you know, what that looks like. I do wanna also say that I've left over on the table. There's a lot of people are interested about how the healthcare exchanges are going. There's a nice little packet here that has information both for how it's gonna work for individuals and for small businesses. The small business part worries me a lot because there's a lot of pieces that are still under development and businesses need to make their plans and wanna make it sooner rather than later. Just a very. Just a very, a couple of very brief comments. One is that Vermont's not doing too badly, but we continue to be very worrisome times. Why I say not doing too badly is we've got the lowest unemployment rate in New England, five percent or so. That doesn't mean that it plays out exactly that way in this town. But overall, we're doing better than most. We are the only state in the nation that last year median income went up a little bit. We also have more entrepreneurs, people starting businesses than any state in, in the whole country. This is good news. On the other hand, what I do see is that the number of small businesses total has gone down, which you'd expect in a recession. So there's no time to relax. We have a lot of work to do. I can tell you that my great interest really lies in making sure we're prepared economically for the future. I think this really is true for young people. I spent a lot of time working on, with workforce development. People, you can be very proud of your school. They have a career day coming up. It's really one of the only elementary schools in our whole system that's doing that. And I think that is really remarkable. There will be also a career week in Bennington. We have actually a problem in that we have a lot of jobs. And we have a lot of people who want jobs. It's the space in between that both the employers and what we do in workforce training programs have to meet and come and figure out the best way to get people prepared for the jobs of the future. And those are going to be jobs that are going to take a little bit more than just high school. We have a very high high school graduation rate in this state. And we don't have a very high rate of people who go on even for two years or certificate programs. And that's a real opportunity for us because in the end, the only place we're going to compete basically is through our effort and our work. We aren't going to compete on the way under the ground, obviously. So those are my general remarks. Some of you may have some questions. You may want to adjourn and just ask me in general. Or you may want to ask me just right here in public in any way you're comfortable with. And again, it's a real pleasure to do the best I can to try and continue to work further. Yes, and I want to tell everybody that hearing is a problem for me. If we have a ball of art for next year, I'd like it to be for our first-class sound system in this room.
So what do you want to try to hear your answer?
I'm Barbara Blair. I just have a quick question. There's a new organization going on. I got a letter in the mail. Through Medicare is, wants to take information that they get, like if I bring the physician's office.
Yes.
I had a test. They want to give it to this other group of people. Now, this other group of people are working with my doctor. And it's all volunteer. The doctor doesn't have to work with these people. But it's cutting down the number of tests. So if I go to a different doctor, uh-uh, can't have it done again. Okay, we're trying to stop that second testing because it's redundant, maybe. Do you know anything about this group?
I'm not sure, but I'd be glad to look, talk to you more and look into it again. But I do know we are looking for ways to basically not pay doctors by just doing test after test after test after test and to pay doctors for keeping the population healthy.
They were, they were organized by Dartmouth and...
Yes.
Pletcher Allen.
Yep. And our hospital here now connects to Dartmouth.
Right.
There are interesting things going on. But the real challenge for us is if doctors are going to be paid for keeping a population healthy, is for us to do our part and be able to comply. Otherwise, doctors will have low incentive. If the people that they're trying to help, did you take your diabetes medicine? Did you do your exercise? Did you do all of these things? If you're doing them, you know, that's going to undermine it too. So we have to be part of the system ourselves and not just expect to go and get fixed. But I think, I mean, we really have a lot of work to do. We know no matter what we do, healthcare costs are in a very unsustainable, difficult place going forward. And if people being aware and doing everything they can is going to be most important. So that's a, it's really important, actually. Anybody else?
Hey, Phil.
Harold.
Hey. Take the message back and stay working. I called Governor Hopland this afternoon. And I wanted to tell him that I was happy with the new tax they're bringing up for pool tickets for the clubs. I called that number and it rang and rang and rang and rang. I guess I'm so hot. I had to get out of here and put that message back.
This is an example of when you're really new to the sound system or you're ready to get too old. And you know, please talk to me afterwards so I can hear that. That sounded really good.
Phil?
Yeah, Steve, you think I had, no. And is it, of course...
Why does it leave you without a question from Nelson?
And it's always, you know, it's got to do with education costs.
Yes.
I know you've worked out of, I think, this year. But it also talked about doing a study with the, with the educational costs and so forth. Can you explain that a little bit?
Well, yes, a little bit is that I think everybody understands that, you know, our education system, sort of like our government in general, is the worst system but for any of all the other ones. Because it's been in place a long time. This year, what happens is that all of you vote for how much money's going to get spent on education. We don't do that in the legislature. That gets voted by everybody in all the towns. But we have to set the rate that you're going to get taxed. And we have to find ways to divide up the pie so it's fair for everybody. This year, it's a really awful, difficult thing. I've usually been able to stand here and say, we've been able to reduce it this much, this much, drop it or so a little bit. Last year went up a penny. This year, it's five cents. And next year, it looks like even more. So when the bill came to the floor, and what it's based on is all of the projected budgets that are out there. School boards have worked really, really, really hard. I know we have locally to hold costs down. Everything in the face of things that they're required to do, that prefer not to do, et cetera. All of that. Cindy, you know better than anyone what I'm talking about. And it can't make you happy and it must wake you up in the middle of the night and the first thing in the morning, you know? So what we did is we put into the bill this year a charge to, a shout to the tax committees that they have to go in and work on the education funding system. Now, how far they'll go, I don't know. Are they going to nibble around the edges? Or is it going to be a vast overhaul? I suspect we need more than nibbling around the edges. But the vast overhaul is going to be hard. Because you remember, it has to meet the constitutional challenge. You can't have an education in this town that is vastly superior or inferior to other towns in Vermont. You know, we've been through that. And that is our challenge, to do that. What happens now is our bill hasn't passed. It has to go to the Senate. The Senate's going to look at it in light of two things. One is, what are the actual budgets that are voted? So what is the real amount of money that they think will have to be raised? And you get closer and closer to that stat. The other thing they're going to look at it is in the light of, what are the revenue projections for the state? And are there other places where you can help out the education fund? Remember, one-third of your sales tax right now goes to education. It's not all property. Two cents of that that you put out there. This is one of the real critical areas that I think that worries all of us. And there are others with the state. And we really need to keep our eye on it all. Mike?
What's up with all these taxes? New sugar tax and sodas and new gas tax. And our dollar tax enough already?
The sugar tax, I can tell you, is not going to go out as a sugar tax. What may happen, and I'm not even sure it's going to get all the way through, is it would include soda, not sugar, soda in the, in the sales tax. Part of the reason for that is there was very strong objection from the grocers. You can imagine in the store, the retailer's store, to assessing more than one kind of tax. Cash registers don't do that very well, et cetera, all along those lines, you know? So that's where that one's going at this point. The gas tax, now that's a really important story, is that, and I think I have here something. The real problem with gas and the problem in that area is pretty simple. We are buying thirty-nine million gallons less gas than we did in two thousand and five. The amount of money that raises with inflation is discounted about twenty-five percent. At the same time, we know we have roads, bridges, et cetera, that are in really, really bad shape. And including town roads as well as state and public highways. We also know that unless we can find a way to raise about thirty million, just north of thirty-five, thirty-five million or so, we're going to leave very broad brush, about fifty million dollars of federal dollars on the table. That'll just get dispersed to other states. So there are very serious discussions about the need to change how we do the gas tax. And what's proposed out there is it's too complicated for districts. An up and down piece on it. But that's a serious proposal that we may have to do. And it will be unpopular because all taxes are unpopular. I do think this is a much fairer way, though, than all the other ideas that were put out there that did not capture out-of-state drivers. I think if any of you, I drive home on Friday night. And when I get to Manchester, and I'm driving south, I see nothing but New York, Connecticut, New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, New Jersey, all the way north. And they're buying gas in Vermont. And they are lined up at the stations in Bennington. They're probably down here at Stewart's. They're coming up through this way. I've got her over there. And we may, need to make sure that they pay for our roads and bridges as well. So that's where that one's at. Safe home, everybody, and see you tomorrow. And please be in touch whenever I can help you or try to answer questions tonight.